All those meeting of Lima City Council to order will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Lowe, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear bowheads, dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to do what's right for our city of Lima. We ask that you continue to bless us, wrap your arms of protection around each and every citizen, the administration in this council, that we can make the best decisions possible for the residents of this city. In your son Christ Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Lowe.
Here.
Mr. Tevin.
Here.
Ms. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Glenn.
Here.
Mrs. Miles.
Here.
And Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'd like to add the Community and Economic Development Committee report.
Second. The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding the Community and Economic Development Committee report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Resolution.
Resolution 514, memorializing the late Ari Florine Napier, outstanding Lima citizen and extending condolences to her family on behalf of the Lima City Council.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Resolution 514 be passed as has been read.
Second. The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 514 after it has been read. We'll have discussion after the reading.
Whereas, January 24th, 2014, the entire Lima Land community was saddened by the death of Ari Florine Napier, a prominent citizen whose many contributions have and will continue to affect the Lima Land community. Whereas, Ari was born in Florence, Alabama, but was a resident of Lima for many years. She was a housewife and mother of five sons and two daughters, and a part-time employee of the YWCA and the Mitzpa Center. And whereas, in 1961, Ari Napier joined New Hope Missionary Baptist Church under Pastor Eddie Kelly, where she served as secretary and treasurer for over 30 years, served on the mothers board, usher board, missionary society, and worked as a church custodian. And whereas, Mrs. Napier loved the Lima community and was actively involved in the Martin Luther King Junior Neighborhood Association, where she served as treasurer and was the worker of the year many times. She was also a finalist for the Lima Allen Good Neighbor Award in 1999. Ari also volunteered with the Girl Scouts and the 4-H. And whereas, it is the opinion of this council that the many contributions of Ari Florine Napier should not go unrecognized. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Lima, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Lima hereby acknowledges the many contributions of Ari Florine Napier, which have and will continue to benefit the citizens of Lima, Ohio, and that the council on behalf of the entire community expresses its condolences to her family and friends.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes, I have a couple things. Ms. Napier was a great, great trailblazer in our community and did a fantastic, great job with the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association. Her, and Gordon, and a whole group of people in that neighborhood, she always there for everybody. She wanted to help, and she'd be gladly missed. And I know I always talk to her sister all the time. Her daughter, I'd go and ask how she doing, and had an opportunity to go out there a couple of times. But Ms. Napier was, she'd be well missed. And I know the Neighborhood Association missed her because she was just there. And I remember time her and Reverend Gordon, and they came out and built the neighborhood out there. They worked very hard to bring Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association there. And that'd be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I know I didn't know Mrs. Napier personally. I know her children, and I know who she, I know who she was, and I would always greet her warmly because I was aware of all the different things that she did in the community. And I'm very grateful that she had the commitment and the heart to serve in this community. As we are starting to lose a lot of our trailblazers, you know, age-wise, my concern is, who do we pass the torch on to?
Sure.
Who is going to carry the legacy that a lot of these, these individuals that came from the South came up North, you know, for, for greater opportunities, and with that greater opportunity, they were committed to working in the community. So my, my concern is, as we lose these individuals, the Alberta Sorrels, the Georgia Newsens, the Mrs. Skipworth, you know, those individuals here, you know, who do we pass the torch on? And my condolences to the family, she surely is going to be missed, but, but she will not be forgotten in our community.
Sure.
The word says that, you know, there's many, there's much work to be done, but the labors are few. And that is definitely what is happening here. There's a lot of work to be done, but the labors are few. And she was definitely a great worker.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Any further discussion? I will have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes. Resolution 514 has been adopted on its, passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. I know there are family members. I'll ask them to come forward and present the resolution.
Mr. President, council members, on behalf of the Napier family from Saginaw, Michigan, to us here in Lima, Ohio, and all the way to Atlanta, Georgia, we kindly thank you for this resolution in the name of our mother, Ari Napier. Thank you.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Frances Napier. I am the oldest daughter of Ari Napier. My mother, she was, she was a caring, kind person, and she, she raised five, seven kids, with five of us, four boys and, and two girls. And I'm not going to say very much. What I have is, is two poems that was wrote by my son, who is in the Navy, who, who lives in, in Texas right now, if I can see. The one is, is a daily prayer he wrote. This one, "So far today, God, I've done all right. I haven't gossiped, and I haven't lost my temper. Haven't been grumpy, nasty, or selfish. I'm really glad of that. But in a few minutes, God, I'm going to get out of bed, and from then on, I'm going to need a lot, a lot of help." And the other one, I can't see it. And it was another one that he wrote. It was really just saying, "Ari," I'm not going to try to read that. I don't have my glasses. "But we want to thank you for the resolution. Mama, she was a kind and considerate person. She took care of all of us. I don't know how she did it, but she did." And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Under the consent calendar. Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Items B, C, and D be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and that Items B, C, and D be received and filed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to apply for an Ohio EMS grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication number one be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From Chief Hefner regarding legislation to sell a fire engine through GovDeals.com.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication number two be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to contract with the Ohio Attorney General moving Ohio forward Phase Two grant.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that Communication number three, receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with URS Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number four be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to incorporate new U.S. EPA rule into the Sewer Use Ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Director of Public Works regarding draft ordinance for an honorary street name.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number six be received, filed, and referred to the Public Works Committee.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number six and refer it to Council's Public Works Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to advertise and enter into contract for construction of sidewalks.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number seven be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to provide ambulance licensing waivers.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move that Communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
And refer to the Safety Services Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file Communication number nine and to refer it to Council Safety Services Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Reports of committees, Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
The Safety Services Committee met on February 10th, 2014, to review the vicious dog ordinance. The issue is still in committee. We will meet again on March 3rd at 6:00 PM here in Council chambers. And all members of the council have received a copy of the minutes, and I ask council to receive and file the report.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file the committee report submitted by Councilor Gordon. Is there any discussion? We do need to receive, file, and approve.
Okay.
Who had the second?
Second.
Okay. Receive, file, and approve the committee report as stated by, submitted by Councilor Gordon. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. The Community and Economic Development Committee.
We had a Community Development Committee meeting on February 1st. It was the first meeting on South Main Street corridor update. And all councils, I got it and read it. I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and approve, refer it to the Planning Commission for Review.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve the committee report and refer it to the Planning Commission?
For Review.
For Review. Is, all those, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. There are no resolutions. Ordinance 1214.
This is a third reading authorizing the mayor to enter to a contract with Sperry &amp; Inc.
Mr. President. Mr. Tevin. I move that Ordinance 12-14 be passed on its third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 1214 on its third reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
No.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
And that's it.
Ordinance 1214 has been passed on its third reading by a five to three vote. Ordinance 3714.
This is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Sperry &amp; Inc. to provide home loan originator services.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Ordinance number 3714 be passed on its second reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 3714 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? I have a question. Perhaps the mayor can answer this. This is the home loan originator services for the first home, first-time home buyer?
It's for the portfolio of loans that the city maintains.
Okay.
And there, because there are repayments periodically, there are loans made.
Okay.
So the, the actual origination, or the underwriting for first-time home buyer assistance actually goes through LACCA.
Okay. What happens to this work if, if we ultimately don't approve this? What happens to the?
Well, we default on our consolidated plan, essentially, if we can't get the work done.
Okay.
And we could potentially lose funding.
So that means we lose the home funds, the CDVG funds?
Correct. We've got a plan, we've committed to it, and we're obligated now to perform.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
No.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
No.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
And no.
Mr. McLean.
Yes. Ordinance 3714 will be placed on third reading as it failed to receive the required two-thirds vote. Ordinance 4814.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Attorney General and to accept and administer funds from the Ohio Attorney General moving Ohio Forward Grant.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Ordinance number 4814 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 4814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 4814 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 4914.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction a 1992 Sutford Fire Engine.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Ordinance number 4914 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 4914 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 4914 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5014.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for Accept and Administer an Ohio Emergency Medical Services Grant for Equipment and Training for the Fire Department.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that Ordinance number 50-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5014 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5014 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5114.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Helms &amp; Sons Excavating for the All Lima Bikeway, Phase Five, Part Two.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 51-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5114 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5114 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5214.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Henry W. Bergman, Inc. for the All Lima Bikeway, Phase Five, Part One.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 5214 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
Ordinance 52, the motion is to pass Ordinance 5214 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5214 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5314.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the construction of certain sidewalks for the 2014 Combined Sidewalk Project.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 5314-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5314 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5314 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5414.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Allen Soil and Water Conservation.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that Ordinance 54-14 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5414 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5414 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5514.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with URS Corporation.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 5514 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5514 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5514 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5614.
Amending Section 1040.01 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 5614 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5614 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ordinance 5614 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5714.
Amending Section 1040.143 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that Ordinance 5714 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 5714 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I know people are probably wondering what all these codified ordinances that we're changing, but it's got to do with the U.S. EPA and our wording in our sewer contract with them. We had to make some changes. We passed this last year, sent it to them. They sent it back with a couple of minor changes, and that's what we're changing, so that was a big deal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 5714 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5814.
Amending Section 1040.16 and repealing Section 1040.17 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that ordinance 5814 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
No, this is to be placed on a second reading, right?
Hmm? No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had that as the last one. Sorry. I stapled them together, that's why.
Oh. Well, good.
Yeah. Yeah, that will. Okay, sorry about that. So, that was McLean that moved.
Who had the second?
Who seconded that.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 5814 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
This is just the rate adjustment on the sewer increase that we're taking these small increments over the series of the next few years to catch up. Been in on my committee for a number of months, and anyone has any questions, feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mr. Tevin.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Glenn.
Yes.
Mrs. Miles.
Yes.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Gordon.
Yes.
And Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 5814 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 5914.
Amending Section 840.10 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gordon.
I move to place ordinance 5914 on the second reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to place ordinance 5914 on second reading. Is there any discussion? I'll just state, for those watching and following, this is going to, second reading to allow time for the communication to go to committee for further review, and it will likely be considered and voted upon at the next council meeting. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Vesseleneous business. Mr. Lowe.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin.
Yes, Mr. President. There is a meeting next Tuesday, March 4th, at 7:00 PM with the Boulevard Neighborhood Association at the Community Resource Center at 1440 West Spring. Lieutenant Ron Holman from the Lima Police Department will be bringing the association up to date on area statistics and new developments in the department. If you have any concerns or questions, this would be an opportunity to share them. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items this evening. I'm happy to say Hope Neighborhood Association will be starting up again. They take a break during the winter months, and they will be meeting on next Tuesday, March 4th, at 6:30 at Unity Elementary School. And look forward to seeing everyone there. Communication tonight, number six, that referred to honoring individuals with street signs. That legislation is going to go to committee, I referred it to the Public Works Committee, and I would like to call for a meeting for this coming Monday, March 3rd, at 5:00 PM to consider that legislation.
Second.
Oh, we already got it in there already. And then, based on your comments, Mr. President, and because of the new members here, Counselor Gordon has a meeting next Monday at 6:00 for the dog ordinance, and with this new legislation being referred to, if your intent is to maybe have a discussion at that time as well, you need to add it this evening.
Okay.
To your agenda, you know, for that meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
You need to refer it?
These are...
It was a...
What's that? The waiver, amending that.
I believe the question is, there's already been a committee meeting notice posted.
Right.
And you need to have Sally issue a new notice with the additional item, if you intend to discuss it at that meeting. If you're going to have it at a future meeting, then you wouldn't need to, but I think we're having that legislation come back in two weeks, so you need to.
Right.
Okay, and you can just get with Sally and have her reissue.
Okay.
Okay?
Because I know, you can only discuss what's the notice states.
What's on the agenda, yeah. She's just keeping you out of trouble.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. And, Mr. Glenn.
Yes, got a couple of things here. First of all, I'd like to give my notice in about, my goal was to find 10 folks a job a month. We up to six right now, and I'm very happy about that, and five of them with insurance, hospitalization, and I'd like to, you know, like to give that report out there, and four of them didn't get, haven't got the insurance yet. But it's very important, folks, that we look at a very aspect on how we, how we need employment here in Lima. I understand what the President said on 3714, I disagree with that, and I've been in the council long enough to see that we're not going to lose no money because we didn't pick a jump service to take over this job here. I think it's very, very important, when a city's doing well as we doing, that we need to get our folks back to work, and that's my belief, and that's a lot of folks' belief. I know I get calls on it, and what direction we're going to take, different things on there about jobs and stuff, and that's all we can do, you know, and like I said, that's my belief on it, and as long as I've been on council, I've never seen that, that we don't support something, and my understanding, no one never told us why they went to this point, why they go to this point, you know? Someone lost their job, what happened there? They didn't get the funding for the job? So, a lot of explanation got to be heard, reason why these situations come up like this, you know, and I always see that these companies continue getting richer, and folks in our wars continue being poor, and they work very hard trying to look for employment. And I know everybody want to throw some different little things in it though, and sell different things about why we want to pass this ordinance, and that's untrue, so if anyone want to call me and ask me about the reason why I'm not going to support this, I'll let them know, because I talk to a lot of folks, and a lot of folks is very happy about it, and they can tell you the story. They can tell you how much money they make. All of us got jobs here or retired, so we living fantastic right now. So, no folks not. When you see 50-year-old man making minimum wage, trying to take care of his family, 60-year-old man trying to take care of his family, 20-year-old trying to begin working employment, there's a lot of things there, and we need, we need to look at it real hard, and sometime, I remember one time I supported this because we had a problem in the department, and we needed help right away, but these are some of the things we got to look at. We need to be more educated on it, and I will educate my folks on it, the way I voted on this anytime they need to ask me about it. I'll come up, we are very happy, we got our kid here, and we didn't get a kid of the week. I'm so proud of, I'm so proud of her so much, and she here tonight, and she was named one of our kids of the week, and I'm trying to get her name right.
Tanea.
Tanea Bridges. She got a 3.7 average, which I'm so happy about and excited about, student at North Junior High School, 5th grade, love to write journalism, which she'll be writing about me one day, and, 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 and leave all the tickles along, it's true, you read it every day in the newspaper, and members of the drum line, high octane, and Ms. Bridges, you're going to be dynamic, you can come up, get your award, and I thank Mr. Lowe for sponsoring this award, and you got something with Jerry Lewis there, let's give her a hand. And this was exciting me about kids that doing good in Lima City Schools, and there's some of the things we're going to continue doing, we worth these kids, let these kids know how much work they doing in there. I like the knowledge, Bobby Huggins, she was named Sixth World Person of the Year, she was named today after the committee looked over everything, they named her today, and I appreciate that, I appreciate all the work they continue doing in the Sixth World, in the city of Lima. Bobby do a lot of work for all community, all any parts of Lima she work at, she do a lot of good work, and I continue thanking her, I continue thanking the folks that we continue helping folks out, I love to read the newspaper seeing that people assisting other folks. This is where we make our city grow and help our city out, you know, with everybody looking out for one another, and that's what we got to continue doing, folks, we got to continue doing, looking out for one another, and just keep on moving in the direction for our kids. That's our future back there. That's the future of Lima, Ohio, and we got to make a good, we got to plant a good seed and water and let it grow for her, and that's what we got to do by continue creating jobs and making her stay here, not leave, stay here. We got employment here for you, honey, so when you graduate from college, you come back to Lima and do a good job. I know we got a lot of our kids that graduated and left because they couldn't find no employment, but we going to make, we going to try to work on that right now, we need to plant the seed tonight and move in that direction, and I know people say I preach about it all, I talk about it all the time, I know it's going to come to clear. I know one day my boys be able to come back here to teach, because I want them home, and